Mayor Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Angel.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Householder.
Here.
Commissioner Shirley.
Here.
Would you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Start the meeting with the Citizens Forum. If there's any citizens that would like to approach the Commission with a topic that's not on today's agenda, please feel free to do so at this time. Please state your name and your address.
I'm Alan Jelka. I live at 847 South Ninth. I'm a candidate for the State Legislature this year, and I just wanted to express my displeasure with the fact that Access Television did not broadcast or tape our October 2nd candidate's forum. And it's particularly disturbing in light of the controversy there was over the funding of that organization last year. I know that the taxpayers provided them with something in the neighborhood of a quarter million dollars a year. I don't know the exact number. In the case of my race, my opponent and I were the only race where both individuals agreed to tape a PBS debate, which is going to be broadcast one more time November 4th. But the other races, for whatever reason, there were candidates that didn't want to tape a debate. I think Access is a very important vehicle for the community. I certainly don't want to see it go away. One of the best things they do, of course, is tape these meetings. It's one of the reasons we have such a good City Commission, because things are very transparent. Anyway, I think somebody should be held accountable with that organization for a really gross failure, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jelka. And you're not the only one that's raised that concern to us. Is there any other citizens that would like to approach the Commission? Seeing none today, we have no awards or proclamations. We have nothing scheduled for public hearings, so we move to the Consent Agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of October 1, 2012. Item 6.2, award of contract for the replacement of a main HVAC unit at the Friendship Neighborhood Center to Waddles Heating and Cooling in an amount of $23,927. Item 6.3, Resolution Number 126938, authorizing a First Amendment to the 2012 Economic Development Service Agreement with the Sina Area Chamber of Commerce. Item 6.4, approve the purchase of fire hydrants from Water Projects Incorporated in an amount of $40,470. Item 6.5, authorize the mayor to sign Agreement Number 116-12 with the Kansas Department of Transportation for exchange federal funds for the East Magnolia improvements. Item 6.6, authorize a change order with SAIC Energy Environmental and Infrastructure LLC for deliverables on the community-wide recycling feasibility study.
Are there any items that a Commissioner has any questions on or would like removed from the Consent Agenda?
I don't have any questions, but I do want to point out that Item 6.6, just so the public knows, is no extra cost to the city on the feasibility study for the recycling program.
That's correct.
I just wanted, yeah, to say to viewers now.
Yeah.
So if there's no items to be pulled, I'd entertain a motion.
May I move at this time, we accept the Consent Agenda as presented?
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the Consent Agenda is read. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries five zero. Today, we have no development business. That moves us into administration.
Item 8.1, second reading ordinance Number 121060, amending Sections 8, 174, 8, 185, and 8, 185.1 of the Sina Code pertaining to qualifications for a building contractor and skilled trade license.
This Ordinance Number 12-10660 was passed on first reading, the October 1, 2012 meeting, and since that time, there have been no comments received. Do we have anybody that wishes to comment on this ordinance at this point in time? Bring it back to the Commission for any discussion and action.
I move to adopt on second reading, Ordinance Number 12-10660, amending Sections 8-174, 8-185, and 8-185.1 of the Sina Code pertaining to qualifications for building contractor and skilled trade license.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve Ordinance Number 12-10660 on second reading. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Angel.
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford.
Aye.
Commissioner Householder.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirley.
Aye.
Mayor Jennings.
Aye. That motion carries five zero.
Item 8.2, second reading ordinance Number 121061, amending Sections 8, 171, 8, 172, and 8, 177 through 8, 182 of the Sina Code pertaining to provisional licensing requirements.
This Ordinance Number 12-10661 was also passed on first reading at the October 1 meeting. Since that time, there have been no comments received. Do we have any comment on this ordinance from anybody in the audience today? Seeing none, I bring it back to the Commission for discussion and action.
I move we adopt on second reading, Ordinance Number 12-10661, amending Sections 8, 171, 8, 172, and 8, 177 through 8, 182 of the Sina Code pertaining to the provisional licensing requirements.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve Ordinance 12-10661 on second reading. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Angel.
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford.
Aye.
Commissioner Householder.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirley.
Aye.
Mayor Jennings.
Aye. And that motion carries five zero.
Item 8.3, second reading ordinance Number 121062, amending Section 8-185.1 of the Sina Code to allow a licensed specialty concrete contractor to perform concrete work in a right-of-way and to clarify the allowed scope of work under a Class A, B, and C building contractor license.
This item, Ordinance Number 12-10662, was passed on first reading in the October 1 meeting. Since that time, there have been no comments received. Do we have any comments on this ordinance today? Seeing none, I bring it back to the Commission for action.
I move we adopt on second reading, Ordinance Number 121062, amending Section 8-185.1 of the Sina Code to allow a licensed specialty concrete contractor to perform concrete work in the right-of-way and to clarify the allowed scope of work under Class A, B, or C building contractor license.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve Ordinance Number 12-10662 on second reading. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Angel.
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford.
Aye.
Commissioner Householder.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirley.
Aye.
Mayor Jennings.
Aye. That motion carries five zero.
Item 8.4, first reading ordinance Number 121063, amending Section 38-1 of the Sina Code by adopting the 2012 Standard Traffic Ordinance.
And Mr. Getty?
Good afternoon. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Chris Getty. I serve as the City Prosecutor for Salina. What I wanted to go over today is what we call the 2012 Standard Traffic Ordinances for Kansas Cities. The purpose, as you know, of the Standard Traffic Ordinances is for the cities to have essentially mirrored ordinances to the Uniform Traffic Code under the Kansas Uniform Traffic Code. As noted in the information that was submitted, there have been some changes this year. The primary change deals with the refusal ordinance or law that's gone into effect. There were a few minor changes, first of all, to the DUI law. Mainly, the changes there were to eliminate one of the charging alternatives. Previously, we could charge someone for being a habitual user of illicit drugs. That's been removed. The authority of the court, both municipal and district, to impound vehicles or to disable those vehicles has been reviewed, taken out, and now test refusals will be counted toward priors for prior DUIs. I would note one major change that we had happen during the wrap-up session of the legislature, which has a definite impact on the municipal court. On July 1 of last year, the Kansas Legislature raised all the minimum fines for any type of DUI offense. That's a first through a fourth by $250. The initial purpose for doing that was to allow that money to be allocated to the Community Corrections Fund. Community Correction is a state agency that supervises individuals under the supervision of the District Court. The law was not clear about whether that money needed to be sent to the state dealing with municipal courts, mainly because we do not benefit from municipal courts, do not from community correction services. The city court here, like most courts throughout the state, were keeping that money, so we, in effect, had a windfall from that. And then the legislature and the wrap-up session slipped in a piece of legislation, which I guess was not caught by a couple of the municipal organizations that were monitoring the law, that now we have to remand that money to the state, even though we do not benefit from community correction services. So that additional $250 that we've been receiving for the last year has now been taken away.
Real quick on that, Commissioners, I just want to kind of add, generally, a lot of people look at fees and taxes, and they don't maybe understand the subtle difference between the two. And a fee is when you pay for a service, could be various levels of service that's provided in some form or fashion to you. A tax is when you pay in and you wouldn't necessarily benefit from that service. Everyone pays in collectively, or a good number of people may pay in collectively and you don't benefit. In this case, this is, I guess, put out there as a fee, but in reality, since Community Corrections does not pay or provide any services by admission, I mean, it's not their choice, but they don't provide services directly to municipal court folks, that I'd look at that as a state tax versus a fee, just for clarity of what it really is versus what is stated.
The major change, of course, is the new horizon we have with DUI refusals now. State Legislature, marrying many other states, to include Nebraska, have now criminalized essentially any type of refusal of a breath test, a urine test, a blood test, when one's been stopped and found and arrested for a DUI. The law that Kansas adopted is somewhat complex, but essentially, if I can break it down, the new law will create essentially a new refusal ordinance, which will, in a sec, take effect if someone's had either a prior DUI conviction or a prior administrative refusal. So they've refused previously the breath test, and that that's generally occurred after July 1 of 2001. There's some exceptions to that. And the person must have been 18 years of age at the time of that prior refusal or conviction, and they must be 18 years of age now to be charged under the new refusal provision. So an individual who's simply stopped the first time, does not have a prior conviction, does not have a prior refusal, would not fall under this new refusal provision. The ordinance gets fairly complex in terms of how you score or count what a refusal is or not, and that's something that's going to fall on the shoulders of a prosecutor in terms of reviewing the traffic history or the certified driving record of the individuals. I think is what's a note, in particular, a note is coming from a different jurisdiction as a prosecutor, is Salina has a very high refusal rate here, and so we will have individuals now that will be prosecuted under this new refusal law. In addition, they can also be actually prosecuted for DUI as well. So if there's enough basis to proceed with the prosecution based upon their incapacity to safely operate a vehicle, they could, in theory, be convicted both of the refusal, as well as, secondly, of the underlying DUI. So this is going to change the landscape, I think, of DUIs in the state of Kansas with this new refusal legislation. And there's much to be scoped out with this over the next few years, I'm sure, as the courts on the appellate level take a look at this statute and what we're seeking to adopt as an ordinance. In terms of our own prosecution at the city level, we will only be dealing with individuals who have a first-time refusal. And essentially, the penalties for that are equivalent to what is imposed with a second-offense DUI, that that person's facing a maximum of one year in jail, a $2,500 fine. The mandatory minimum fine is $1,250, and the minimum amount of jail time that must be served prior to being placed on parole is five days. So essentially, it takes that and treats it like it's a second-offense DUI. The other minor changes that occurred, there were some changes in the driving while suspended, driving while habitual sections. Now, there's some provisions to allow individuals who are suspended or habitual users to obtain a limited Class C driver's license. That is for the purpose essentially of operating a motorized bicycle or a moped. They can get a limited license for that basis now. They didn't necessarily have that ability previously, so it will allow them some limited basis to have some transportation. Other than that, those were the major changes that occur in the SDO. Is there any questions?
Any questions from the Commission?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Getty. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission for further discussion and any action.
Mayor, I move that the Commission approve Ordinance 12-10663 on first reading.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve Ordinance Number 12-10663 on first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries five zero.
Mayor, I move that the Commission declare that a compelling public person exists, public purpose exists due to the fact that the state laws went into effect on July 1, 2012, and our SDO handbook has not yet been adopted by the city.
Second.
We have a motion in a second declaring a public, the compelling public purpose exists to hear the ordinance on second reading today. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries five zero.
Mayor, I move that the Commission adopts Ordinance 12-10663 on second reading. Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve Ordinance Number 12-10663 on second reading. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Angel.
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford.
Aye.
Commissioner Householder.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirley.
Aye.
Mayor Jennings.
Aye. That motion carries five zero.
Item 8.5, award of bid for the replacement of two ambulances.
Chief Morgan.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for hearing us this afternoon. Before you, we've got a Commission Agenda item requesting the purchase of two ambulances. Back in about 2007, 2008, the automotive industry was in chaos as far as what chassis they were going to produce, and engines, and combinations, and things of that nature, and we were left with very few options moving forward to buy ambulances. And so we got behind the curve. We generally tried to buy one a year, and we have a fleet of seven, so generally, they serve about four years frontline duty, three years reserve, and then about their eighth year, they're cycled out of the fleet. And so we got behind with that, and you saw us a while back by a bariatric ambulance, which is one for really heavy people, overweight folks, and that was a larger unit. I want to point out today, I have Battalion Chief Kelsey here and Battalion Chief David Turner here, and David, along with Battalion Chief Scott Abker, they really supervise and work on our vehicle specs and what we buy and why we buy it. And David would probably be the resident expert if you get into some specifics here, and I may turn it over to David at some point here. But we will have a bid for to replace two ambulances. As you know, the county budgets for that passes the money through to the city to replace these units. You see the bids come in for these two units. One of the things that the Apparatus Committee did do, Chief Turner and Chief Abker, they looked at going back to a standard pickup-style chassis, because it seemed like they were more solid at this time, more reliable. We weren't going to be subject to some increased competitive costs and would serve the purpose well for the fire department and provide ambulance service. And so we got three bids back. We got one from OCSJ Ambulances, one from American Response Vehicles, excuse me, and Wheel Coach. As they worked through the bids, the OCSJ Ambulances came in at the lowest cost, and in an effort to keep the cost below the budgeted amount or keep it manageable, they went back and pulled some equipment off of the unit that was originally expected to come in with it, with the idea that in 2013, when there's more funds allocated from the county, we would use some of those funds to replace some of that equipment, which we hoped would be available to us. I sent this along to Rhea Ditzer, the county administrator. She seemed to think that that was okay to do. And so we bring this before you today, recommending that we buy the ambulances without the equipment in the amount of $352,594 today. And I'd be glad to answer any questions for you. It's pretty straightforward as to what these units are.
Any questions of the chief? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody from the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission for discussion and action. I did notice on there that there are a couple of different options for the disposal of the two existing units, so Chief, you'd like direction from the Commission if we would approve this purchase on...
Actually, what we're doing is, I'm not necessarily sure we need your direction on that, other than to inform you that what we would like to do, generally, we put those out for sale or to trade in and things like that. They post the amount of money back against the county, what the county contributes. We've been in some discussion with the rural fire departments about redeploying those units out to the rural fire departments as first responder vehicles for some medical folks that they may have interest in doing that. We haven't gotten very far down that path, but certainly, we're going to get to that point. We just, we thought there might be some value to explore that. If they show us some interest in it, we're hoping that passing them back to the county and the county could give them to those rural fire departments would be a good benefit to do that, since they paid for them originally, anyway.
Sure.
You know, that sort of thing. And if the county's not interested in doing that, if the rural fire departments were not interested, then we'd put them out on Purple Wave and get rid of them and credit the money back, that sort of thing. But, you know, it's kind of one of those things, we start looking at the, you know, we run a county-wide ambulance service, and we do everything we can to synergize the service out there, to where people have the same equipment, the same opportunities, and things of that nature, to survive life-threatening injuries and illnesses and things. And I think that, at this time, they may not be interested in that, but just the idea that we're having these discussions shows me we've come a long, long ways. So we've got a ways to go, but that's the two options. We're not going to grow the fleet. They're either going to go back to the county, or we'll cycle them out, and the money will go back to the county.
Sounds good.
At this time, I'd move that we award a bid for the replacement of the two ambulances.
Second.
Do you want to specify the amount?
Yeah. We have an board, OCSJ Ambulance for two Type 1, 2013 ambulances for the low bid amount of $352,594.
Can we have a motion in a second to award the bid to the OCSJ Ambulances for two Type 1 2013 ambulances in a low bid amount of $352,594? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries five zero.
Item 8.6, Resolution Number 126939, authorizing a First Amendment to contingent contract for seller real estate for surplus property located at 629 North Ohio.
Mr. Schreig.
Thank you, Mayor. On July 16 of this year, the City Commission authorized entering into a contingent real estate contract for property that had been declared to be surplus and to sell that to Wogomath and Daniel Investments, which is known locally as Midway Wholesale. That contingent contract provided a sale price that was based on an appraisal that represented fair market value of $30,000, and the contingency was that within 90 days of the effective date of that agreement, the buyer would initiate applications necessary to obtain approval, which would include a planned development district for that particular property. Mr. Warren Edgar is here today on behalf of Midway Wholesale, and the staff has been working with him with regard to the planned development district application. At this point, there's still work to be done in terms of surveying and development of a plan that addresses storm drainage concerns and can be submitted for staff for review and approval. And so consequently, Mr. Edgar and Wogomath and Daniel have requested a 90-day extension of the PDD filing deadline, which necessitates the amendment that's before you today. The staff report that I provided you provides the background from the prior staff report that discussed the surplus property designation and some of the options in terms of the way that it could be disposed. I haven't elaborated on those. We'll be happy to answer questions if you have them. In terms of a fiscal note, there's no expense to the city. Rather, it would result in a $30,000 sale of the property, which should represent fair market value. In terms of possible options for your consideration with respect to the amendment, you could vote to approve the resolution, which would grant the 90-day extension, or you could vote to deny it, resulting in not only denying the extension, but the expiration of the contingent real estate contract. Not to confuse things or complicate things further, but in the event that the contract was not extended, then options as it relates to disposing of that property might include solicitation of bids through a sealed bid or auction process, listing the property for sale through a more typical real estate sale process, or a non-contingent sale to Midway Wholesale. Staff believes that Wogomath and Daniel and their architect have exhibited adequate due diligence in proceeding with the site plan and plan development application, and that it would be appropriate to grant them the requested extension of 90 days. Therefore, we recommend option number one.
Any questions of staff on this item? Do we have anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission for action.
I move we approve Resolution Number 126939, resulting in granting the requested extension.
Second.
A motion in a second to approve Resolution Number 12-6939, results in the granting of a 90-day extension. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries five zero.
Item 8.7, authorize an agreement for design services related to the Cloud and 9th Street intersection improvements.
Mr. Stagg.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. A few weeks ago, we talked to you about this item at a study session. We received some KDOT funding for, to make some, or to look at making some improvements to the Cloud and 9th Street intersection based on an accident history there. There are highways... There are highway safety improvement funds that were available and have been given to the city, if we can find a suitable option to make that work there. So, that is something we talked to you about a few weeks ago. On October 1, Lochner, H.W. Lochner here from Salina, presented some findings from a study they did there about the accidents, and some of the options that we could possibly undertake to improve the situation. Alternative two is what we discussed at the time, which would add some medians on Cloud Street, west and east of Ninth Street, and look at closing some driveways and realigning some parking, as well as adding a southbound lane that will help to decrease the queues and the traffic stacking that's there. Staff and the commissioners also wanted to look at drainage of that intersection, has been a problem in the past as well. So, that'd be something they'd look at here as well. H.W. Lochner has done a big, large stormwater project at Claflin, just north of here, so it should tie in. They've studied this area before, so we felt like they're very qualified for that as well. The process we used to select them originally was a kind of a pre-qualified process, we went through with some different firms around the area, and they were clearly a good firm with traffic and drainage-related qualifications. So, fall of 2011, we actually started the process to select them, and then have gotten to this point now. Let's see. The contract really has, really is our standard front-end agreement with a lot of scope items, including preliminary plans, build set, office check plans, and final plans, and those are basically to satisfy the KDOT process. Some of those, I wonder why do we, we have a lot of different steps, but that is what we're somewhat required to do by KDOT, so that there are quite a few steps that we have to go through in the next few months to get these plans to a level that can get close to being constructed. So, the city is providing the topo surveys. That was something we've been working on the last few months. We've done, our surveyor has been doing the surveying for the area, and that was helpful in the study session. We've done quite a bit of the surveying and know where the right-of-way is, so that is something that we feel like we're partnering with them, which helps reduce the fee somewhat on this project. The attached agreement is for a total fee of $115,000 for Lochner. This was budgeted for last year for 2012 funds at $50,000, so we didn't think it'd be quite this much. However, based on kind of the expanded scope, and really wanting to address that intersection in whole, and not just doing some lane shifts and smaller alignments, we feel like this is a good, a good plan, and it is a million-dollar construction project proposed, so it's a decent-sized project. We feel like the attached fee is actually fair. It's, 11% is not far, and 15% is what you'd normally see on an intersection project, because they're, they're just confined, there's a ton of traffic phasing stuff that you have to deal with, and a lot of tight corridor. It'll be a challenging project to design, but we feel like they can, they can do it. The project will need to be budgeted for in the next five-year CIP process, so Rod hasn't been around for a week, he's had some health issues, and he's been aware of this project, but we will have to budget the actual construction for this, and then in the five-year CIP budgeting process, which is coming up in the next, I think it's next week, actually, at a study session. So, I know in the next few weeks, we'll be hammering out where to actually get the money from to build this project. At this time, though, we would entertain questions, and we'd like you to authorize the mayor to sign the attached agreement, basically, and get us moving on this project. That's all. David Johnson is here with Lochner, and Wayne Nelson is also the project manager on the project, so we try to answer questions.
Excellent. Any questions of staff? Thank you, Mr. Stack. Do we have anybody here from the audience that would like to speak on this item? Sir?
My name's Steve Albright. I own property and buildings on both Cloud and Ninth Street, that intersection that is up for improvement. I understand that, and I think that's always a good thing for the city and for, especially that intersection. I mean, it is a troublesome and rather congested intersection. You know, as a business owner and a building owner, property owner, I don't understand why we haven't been informed of what is going to be implemented there and what's going to happen. You know, we have a business on Cloud Street and a business on Ninth Street. When this all happens, is that going to interfere with both those businesses? And, you know, what is exactly the overall plan for this improvement at that intersection? So, just something I'd like to know. I mean, I would appreciate some kind of update, or notification, or clarification on, you know, what the city's plans are to that intersection, because it'll have a direct impact on both of our businesses. And, you know, if they're planning on closing off driveways, then, I mean, obviously, there are going to be some of our driveways, and, I mean, I think we should have some input into that decision.
Commissioners, as you know, it was just recently, the results of the traffic analysis was recently brought to you, and that's where we finally, as a staff, I think, figured out some possible options to look at. And I think now that we're in the design phase, it makes sense that that information sharing happened. You may find areas tweaked in that design, we don't know that for sure, but this is the opportunity to do that. So, quite honestly, until we got to this point, there really wasn't sufficient information to share, but I think we have that now, and now's a good time to fully engage all the potential or the impacted property owners. And I'll look at, I'll look at Dan, but I would presume that's already something that you have planned.
Yeah, we have some public meetings that we're... So, that's a good point to let the public know as well, that hiring Lochner, and definitely public meetings are part of this process, and now we're going to really engage that process. And like Jason said, we didn't really have any good options for the intersection to even talk about it until a few weeks ago, so that's why we're ready to get started and then have those meetings as well.
Yeah. I think, I think on this project, one of the important things is, is normally, when you start to see activity out in a location, you assume that everything's all mapped out and been determined, and a lot of the work that's been done so far has been all the traffic counts and things, in order to get monies from KDOT, to take advantage of the redesign of the area for safety. And now, if, if I could make an easy portrayal of the process, it is, these are all the plethora of things that can be done to that intersection to improve the safety, now we need to hone in and design that. So, like what Mr. Stack and Mr. Gage were saying, this is the time where the businesses can be brought in and say, okay, this is, this is how that's going to get reconfigured, or what changes we're looking at in that area. So, I hope that answers the where it's at in the process, and I can understand where it's been talked about for so long, it might feel like it's, it had already been designed, but...
And that was part of our concern.
Yeah.
You know, my brother owns a little station there, and I own most of the buildings on that corner, except for the annuals. So, you know, you read about it in the paper and you hear about it, but, you know, we keep waiting for some kind of information ourselves, so we understand what's going on and what the plans are. Obviously, I mean, if it, you know, if it falls in the spring, the summertime, that's, you know, it's not going to be easy on us. So, you know, I mean, it's just something we'd like to be kept informed of.
Yep.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else from the public that wishes to speak on this? Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion and any action.
Mayor, I move that we authorize you to sign the attached agreement between the city of Salina and H.W. Lochner, Inc.
Second.
A motion and a second authorizing my signature of the agreement for the design services at this Cloud and Ninth Street Intersection Improvement Project. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
I move to recess into executive session for 30 minutes to discuss a legal counsel matter subject to attorney-client privilege, for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and reconvene at 5:10 PM.
Second.
Motion and a second to move into executive session for legal reasons. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Do we expect any...
Action.
Action. That's it. Results, announcements?
We do not.
Okay, we're now in executive session.